Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, welcome everybody. This is a regular start for the Tuesday, July 6th, 6:00 PM. We're at the Rockford. Motion to adopt the agenda presented. The law.
That is.
The discussion. If not, all favor, the agenda said yes, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, we have two minutes tonight. Those seven minutes of the 21st birthday. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the 21st? If not, motion to adopt the minutes as presented. Do you agree from first?
Seven minutes.
Any further discussion? All favor, I'll admit, accept the minutes. Do you agree from first, say aye.
Aye.
Close. And move on to the minutes to the 23rd. Do we have any additional corrections for those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer a couple of edits, please.
Go ahead.
So in item number one, where it says apply for the grant by July 1st, 2015, that should be 2021.
Okay.
And in item two.
One second, Susan. Wait, you got this, you got this. Right, it's far.
And since item number two, and item number, yeah, question item number two, I'd like to recommend that our interrupting be changed. The question and the word and complaints be deleted.
Does anybody have those two minutes? Please change some minutes. If not, do we have any other additional additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, motion to accept the amended minutes.
Seven minutes.
Please say.
Seven minutes.
Any further discussion? If not, all favor, I'll read the minutes. I'll read the amended minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Close. The next items, starting with the first again.
So I finally got the price from Bob yet, the guy girls. So to do, held on the Roosevelt Bridge, do the four corners, be $2,460 through that project. And you guys have to fix the Garyville on 35. You have a couple of different sections. One spot is $706. And the second spot they put down is $1,228. So to do everything, the $4,440, $4,500. The town does provide the traffic control. Where they're going to track $100 an hour. They're going to, they're going to reuse some of the rail that we have, some of the locations on 35, we can get that right down.
Especially if you have as many capital budgets as not.
Leaders, $5,000, I can't remember who for that.
Do you, do you have any?
I don't have the capital budget with me.
No, it was a lot.
We can check into that. I just, I just thought I picked this up on the way back here, so I'm just.
Well, do you need a motion now or the next one? Is there a fine claims that you could say, say aye?
No, they just did a fine frame. It's under the, it's actually under the $5,000, not a bit request, but not put it out there.
But it's not much short to me though.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to make a motion to do the bond, the bond is there and the capital budget, then like all under, I signed that one.
Maybe that's fair price.
Yeah, I mean, actually just looking at their per book price and stuff on it, hasn't changed a lot. Or yours, yours.
Thank you.
These five, I think.
Only a minute.
As for, as for the capital budgets?
Yeah, the money available is the customers.
That's good.
Is there any other discussion? On the Roosevelt?
Not yet.
Thanks for doing that, Dave.
Does anyone, we have a vote by our, I mean?
Yes, the vote by, I believe it's.
Okay, so we have a motion, okay, no further discussions. All favor, of having, Rob yet, you hear the God girls have mentioned, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Well.
Nothing else. The fires rose over the head of rains. Haven't got anything to damage. There are a couple of, sorry, yes, uh, Apollos on 21st, still a little rough on the east end. But most fire were all, they're not pretty good. We finished the Better Back Road grants on the Chuck Roosevelt. So we still is back. Um, after accounts payable, we will submit the last of that. And we start on the one 21 project and some of the, um, Better Back Road votes on the K-40 road and Gray Road. That'd be rewarded this year.
Do you have a date from basin and something in stock?
I haven't heard of them.
Anybody have any further questions to be made?
We, there's a part of the today, now by.
Can you talk louder, Kathy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, please.
Yeah, there's a, there's a part of the, over by Tracy Lake.
Oh, I don't know about.
Just straight up the, turn the wall, the year. I have to make any, other than that.
Oh, whatever.
Anything else to add? Not, Dan, thank you. Okay, and here on the patch.
Okay, um, I sent a lengthy email along with an attachment. Did everybody understand it? And I referred back to the town report.
Can the unit speak in your mind?
No, this computer picks me up.
Okay.
That's why I have it turned to try and pick up you guys. Um, I'm still getting some feedback from the audience that says it's really hard to understand the board. So we really need to use loud voices. Um, do you have any questions on the chart that I sent for the tax rate? It pretty much explains it on page 20. And then if you refer it back to the separate articles that we voted on, it breaks down each article. And our capital budget and then, um, the grant list comes from the 411 that the listers lodged on the 21st of June. The computer does the formula. And so for the municipal, municipal tax rate, we come up with .7168. Just on the municipal for the budgets. Then we have our, what we call local agreement. And the local agreement consists of, we exempt them every five years. They rotate and we exempt them from paying municipal tax. But the state does not recognize them as exempt from educational tax. So the townspeople need to pay for their portion of their educational tax. And the fire department is a non-resident. The GIA, the nature museum and historical society. So they then have to take the non-resident educational tax. And then we multiply that and we are paying that portion. The veterans exempt, um, they're automatically exempt 10,000, state of Vermont. And Grafton voted several, quite a few years ago to exempt an extra 30,000 on top of that. So that comes off their assessed value. So again, we have to make up the educational portion of it. But then they come under a residence tax rate. So they get multiplied there. So once we add up the municipal and then we add up the local agreement, we're at .7317. And that's what you would be voting on today because we have no say over the education. Um, in most years, I've always tried to round up just in case. But in this case, because our tax rate is slightly higher, I really would hate to round up any more than I absolutely would have to. But that's your choice. So then on the bottom portion, we take the non-res education of 1.5540 and add the .7317 and we have a total of 2.2857 for non-res. The homestead education tax rate of 1.6942. Add the .7317 and we come up with 2.4259 is going to be our overall tax rate. But if you have any questions and then if you want to make a motion, and we're just making a motion on the municipal of .7317 as being our 2020, 20, 21, 22 municipal tax rate.
How much, how much is that up from last year?
Um, I want about 11 cents, I believe. Well, 11 cents overall, we're five cents on the municipal.
We just want to go on the record that, um, I'm gonna call that the resident tax rate is higher than the non-res. I don't know who can remember this, but when that six we was, was passed, the government promised that the residents would never pay more than the non-res. Guess what? Give you any?
This, this, this is our third year in a row that the non-res are lower than the resident. Um, prior to that, it was every now and then.
Somebody want like a motion? Or any question with Dan? Does anybody in the audience have any questions on the tax rate? No, we need a motion to accept the, say.
I know that we set the .7317 tax, municipal tax rate. Actually, it's much, we want 22.
Seven?
Seven.
Do you have any, do you have any discussion? Any questions? If not, all favor of the setting the tax rate, just motion goes on. It's a question we.
Point, .7317.
Uh, motion to accept that amount, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, and then you have a. One. Okay, if you have, uh, if you need to have a resolution to accept the ARPA funds, that is a requirement, you can do that before you invite the P. Otherwise, you don't get these, those two funds that federal government and state has given us. So all we need, hey, everybody has a paper. So we, all we need is a resolution to accept.
Here, um, you need to read the motion clearly and have it seconded within an open meeting. Um, in case we get audited by the federal government down the road. So you actually need to read A, B, C, and D. And, and you need to name and appoint the people. And I believe you must have a copy of that that Bill had given you. In case anybody's wondering, the ARPA funds are the four of the five, um, funds that are allowed to, um, each state.
How much, how, I have a copy.
Do you want my copy? I have a copy myself.
Should have had that.
You were giving all the answers.
What we need to read. So this, this has, one will be ready in a minute.
According to, yes, these writes on the top of it that this motion, not the attachment, should be read aloud properly and clearly for the recording. And the motion needs to be seconded and recorded in an open meeting. So I'm assuming A, B, C, D needs to be read.
Okay, we all, was it third class or who's the first? Sam, do you want to read all these?
Three seconds.
Not more than one. It's one motion wrong, but they're in the middle.
Motion, the authority of town president hereby assess the progress of the town of Bratton, Vermont, the U.S. Department of Defense, one of the state fiscal recovery fund and one of the local fiscal recovery fund authorized pursuant to section 625 of the previous conspiracy act. Is added by section 9901 of American Rescue Plan, of L. number 117 dash 2, March 11, 2001. Accept the said fund subject to the authority, terms and conditions, and assurances and compliance with civil rights requirements for the community there and these conditions present to accept the insurance. Uh, so the beautiful point of the plan.
Chair, who's, uh, he suggested, who the chair.
Uh, the chair.
Of his left board, yeah, so.
Points the chair to select board, the Albrecht representative of the town of Bratton.
You might want to name him.
Points the chair to select board, Jose Folio, the Albrecht representative of town of Bratton. For all matters concerning West Department of Treasury for the Florida State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, the main is to that of Bratton. Appoint, submit, appoint standing names.
Name.
Uh, town clerk, Kim Recker, to contact person for the town of Bratton. And for all matters concerning West Department of Treasury for the Florida State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, the district attorney is the town of Bratton. Rexy Bubley, the authorized representative.
Back to the chair.
Uh, chair, Jose Folio, executive on behalf of the Bratton State Board, statement agreed for the set, terms set forth in the U.S. Department of Treasury for the Florida State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund award terms and conditions, which is attached in the.
And what, we need to, one will.
You need to do a roll call. So after we've, yes, we've, for motion. Somebody has been motioned.
Huh?
She has been motioned with. Tina?
Yeah, so what do you make?
I think that the select board will accept this motion. I mean, seconds, the all ARPA ones.
Do you have any other second, before we take a vote?
The third second.
John is.
Yeah, John.
You have the number only that.
I don't know, it's 100 and one. It's, it's not that.
We thought it was going to be about 120 and it turns out it's going to probably 70,000. But we're getting it in two separate payments, 35,000 for one year and 35,000 the next year.
Right, okay. If everybody, so everybody knows, those, that, those funds are a separate account.
They're still going to go into our general account.
You don't need a special account.
No, what we will do is we'll have them set aside, just, um, and just, we'll have to keep track of them in our general account like we do the others. Um, and that's, we've got some plans, we're hoping for, for the 70,000.
If you have no other discussion, that's another roll call. You allow?
Aye.
That's enough. You know, yes.
Yes.
You?
Yes.
You can do that. Anything else, Dan, that we have to do with the, this?
Um, you're just probably going to have to find someplace here to sign. So make sure that you'll have to come into the office as, as your.
Do you have a copy of it or?
Not this one, I think you're going to want it. Well, we'll wait, yeah.
Okay, but there will be that before the article came.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I think we, oh, Dan's, um, thank you for filling out that T D and completing that portal. And through, make this something possible to the town, thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. Funds will be worth it.
Hopefully.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, Dan, you're on next, if you have any questions, welcome, Dan.
Um, I don't have anything more to add, other than, um, now that the tax rate is set on Thursday, um, the listers will be in the office. Um, they actually have to put that into their grant list. And, um, once they insert all these figures, it's a tedious process, but once they do that, I can then start rolling through and printing the tax bills and hoping to get them in the mail with some shells help on Friday and Monday. So we're, we're well on the way. Um, my deadline is to get them in by the 15th, which is a week from this Thursday. And we're right on target. And first payment will be due August 15th. I believe August 16th, I'm sorry, I think the 15th falls on a Sunday. So I'll have them do on the 16th. That's about all I know.
Does anybody have any, uh, questions or concerns to Dan?
Oh, and just to let you know, I've already gotten my checklist for the upcoming audit. So we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, the next item is conflict of interest discussion. Um, we do have a concern. We have, we know, to let them appear. Um, that is, I'm looking to work and there was some question from the audience and from select orders. We really have a conflict of interest. So Dan, if you ask me, should you speak about it? If you'd like to speak now?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unless there's anything else you'd like to do to deal with the issue. So thank you very much. Not to speak to this issue. On Tuesday, and I do have some very marks, just to put it up. On Tuesday, June 29th, Joe notified me that we had asked Bill to contact the Secretary of State's office and BLCT for a potential conflict of interest arising from mysterious select board member and recommended validation board. And that I may have to recuse myself from the wastewater project plan. I appreciate you have noticed so that I had some time to read it and to research this topic. My remarks are based on my understanding of the town of Bratton's policy regarding conflict of interest and ethical behavior, which I have signed, except for now. I have researched the link provided by the Secretary of State's office and I found no charter applying to the town of Bratton. Also, on the town's west side, there are no ordinance listed governing conflict of interest other than the policy passed on. Here's what I have learned about policy and my situation. Conflict of interest policies exist to ensure citizens that all decisions made by their public officials serve the best interest of their constituents. A small town, potential conflicts of interest, freedom and procedure inevitably overpassed. However, the presence of a potential conflict is not necessarily mean that an official may not continue to act in a particular situation. The deciding factor can be whether the official is able to act impartially. As you are aware, in addition to my position as a select board member, I also sit on the board of the foundation. When it comes to overall planning of the town's municipal ways of our management system, I do not see my role as a member. While the town needs to identify a location for the study and the project to go over, said in preparation, if a suitable location for reach bill cannot be found, project will not go over. It is far uncertain that the foundation plan would be connected to that. First, it's important to understand that no site has been chosen and no site has been advocated for by me. Right now, three sites have been identified as possibilities. There are also proposals to selected additional site locations from public. The engineering feasibility study has yet to be undertaken and it will not be started until the engineering plan is best has been received by the town three to four months. No contract for the engineering study will be signed until state funds to pay for the work are in hand. In the meantime, the select board and water commission will discuss the project, water project with help of meetings until a suitable agreement is reached for the engineering firm to tie it up. Right now, in the foreseeable future, the select board in planning this is not taking any action, directly or indirectly, related to the foundation. Because of this, I am confident I can continue to pursue the best interests of the town for its wastewater gains. I will continue to act fairly, objectively, and in the public interest pursuing this matter. As an example, along with other select board members, I advocate setting up a board, select specialist select board meeting, such a matter of experts and representatives of the water commission to answer questions from the select board and public in such a way that the engineering plan in advance application was submitted by July 1st and Bratton is now second in line for state funding. In conclusion, I will give this to the town impartially during the planning process and I choose not to recuse myself from wastewater planning generally or Article 8, but no to Bratton policy regarding harmful appearance. Certainly, should a real or perceived conflict arise with respect to specific town actions that may be related to the wastewater project and foundation, I will once again notify the public and select board of my potential conflict and guided by my commitment to remain impartial, contemplate accusing myself from those specific decisions. I am honored to serve on Bratton's level. And I look forward to seeing us continue serving together to benefit our town.
Okay. The way this works, as I understand it, is the select board is an opportunity, if they should choose to question our, when they comes. And when that is done, they're in the public. They're, they're ready to make a comment, a comment. So does any of the board have any, say, or comments about what she has?
I have the all set. And left board member myself on an honor, having on the board to some of the information, facts, what I'm from. And I have some of the superior achievements.
Is there anybody who want to? He has any comment on the, on the, for each of the group to, 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 to. Alan?
It would be better, yes, um, because otherwise the public can't hear you.
Having been on the select board.
Help, very hard.
Having on the, being very.
And right close up to.
Help practice. Having been on the select board when at least one conflict of interest policy was written, um, like the drop, people's detention to number five, conflict of interest does not arise in case of votes or decisions in matters which public consider as personal or feeling carrying interest in the outcome no greater than those of public persons generally affected by a decision such as adoption of violence, certain factors. I think it's unfortunate that people single out the window foundation when there's other businesses in town that often contribute to our tax rolls.
You have any other comments? If not, you shall move on to the agenda. The next item is the London Community Society meeting. I think you all have seen copies of. Just to tell you for the youth people, if there is an issue with a dog or something that concerns animals, they are the ones that take all the care of. That's the reason why we have that because we're not capable. The constable is not capable of taking rat's law or something like that. So we have to go some community society and they've been that way now. Have you maybe done something?
Probably the last five that was at, we've actually had to sign a contract and pay, I believe it's $300 a year to hold a spot in case we have an animal that needs to go there.
Is there any discussion on this contract? And do you have any questions about it?
Um, we might get out a question that will be used if found.
That's correct.
And the town says these if an animal is after something.
Yeah, I believe our policy states that they are to cover any fees in order to get their animal back out of the shelter.
This fee has been fixed a long time, right?
It has, it has not changed.
Thank you. Can I still use that?
We have a couple of times in the last couple of years.
Is that the file company?
This is the contract.
So then first you can, I don't know, sure that before you go on. Go ahead, join me in a motion to accept the London County Community Society contract. Almost, you accept it? Any further discussion about George? Do you have any other comment? If not, hold a favor of accepting the London County Community Society contract, say aye?
Aye.
Both? The next order of business is James and James. Well, contract, I have a question about this. And if we are going to use, the, I guess they're called heat pumps, I'm not aware of the exact terminology. It's called mini splits. To heat this building and the air conditioning, the rest of the building and the post office. Why do we need to enjoy it? Then the furnace just becomes a pad. So why would we want to prove such an amount? That's my question.
Well, that was kind of my thought too, because if we're going to put heat pumps up here and we're going to put them in the post office, we don't really know what our usage is going to end up being. Two years ago, our usage, it's hard to calculate because I thought Bill had done this. I don't think yet, we had paid our pre-buy and we, two years ago, we had $600 in credit. This past year, we did our pre-buy and we had $900 in credit that were carried over. We just didn't see the 515. So each year, we seem to have a carryover and now we're not even going to know what we're going to have. The only chance you're taking by not doing a pre-buy, you're not locked into the price. So you're taking a gamble of going up or possibly down.
Do you know when this contract is actually having to sign?
The 15th.
Of this month?
Of this month, due by July 15th.
Well, the only reason why, I mean, you have $900 credit.
Right, credit with them.
With the mini splits, if they are so installed, they're electrical. You have a generator per se on the London property. So even on a pro long power usage outage, we do not have to use the cords.
Right.
So the only time we could use it, if all the mini splits, we'd have like three downstairs now.
Yep.
And then would be, I think, two up here and one of the most of the total six. If they all failed at once, then you'd have to heat, but that's pretty annoying.
It does, it does our hot water also.
Okay.
But we don't use that much hot water.
So I mean, I have a problem with James, Jane, that is still around. He's looking for these.
I think I had a bill on this, his recommendation was that we do this for one year. And just see, he may build up more for us to carry your following year. But that was those recommendations for one year and see what the heat level looks like once we have the heat pumps.
One second, one question is though, if we end up doing that, when we have a $1,000 credit or whatever, can we get that in cash?
Yeah, it would just go towards the next.
So how would you ever use up this credit?
Well, you would eventually use it if you did next year. Well, we're always going to use something. It stays warm, you can always hear the heat circulating through the pumps, we're always going to use it. We always have maintenance done on our system also. So it's up to you if you want to do the $4,000 upfront or.
Okay, that's a question.
Have you told James and James about the heat pumps?
They don't know.
Yeah.
So they figured out the heat pumps?
They didn't figure the heat pumps because right now they're just at the point of best of the living. So they haven't given us their quote yet.
So how would you like to proceed here?
I may wash, no, we didn't touch this. So we're going to, you don't use it, you're going to get back a while near.
So you don't get it, you only can use it in credit.
Well, you get back in credit, so use, you would add less oil to following. When you match change, you can, you can just ask for less oil, okay? You can figure it out. How about use it?
And credit for that one, that is a good way to deal with spending that much money. And would the credit also be applied to maintenance if that, like, so we really have a very risk of this?
I don't, I don't, I don't understand, I don't know if that's that.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Is, is the credit can be applied for maintenance as well?
I would think it can be credited to anything because you can see on their building that they have the labor and the heating. And not only that, another point is, we have a child with them, it's a town of Raptor, we get their fuel, we get their diesel, I mean.
Okay.
And I can always ask, maybe we can get a check, you know, at the end of the year for our credit.
Um, Bill, this is not a signed agreement, but we need a motion to accept whatever those are pending. I don't see, I have a copy, I must, there is a trust of the same issue, so I guess. They don't really know the side of all stuff, so I'll go to you.
Yeah, if you give him the authorization to sign, so in a motion, if you authorize him to go ahead and sign the contract.
Okay, so we need this. Will you, will that be a motion? You want a second?
Second.
That's the second. Any further discussion on James and James' oil contract?
Only that James and James, that kind of company with us, they are very reliable.
Very.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, hold a favor of Bill and James and James contracts with oil for this year, say aye?
Aye.
Both? That's done. We have, we have to appoint generators to the solid waste pool.
In charge of.
Yeah, stick it without, oh, who else is this?
The sheriff's contract.
Oh, who's that? The sheriff's contract. Uh, John, you had questions about sheriff's contract. So here it is, and for the last many years, we haven't been able to since, in turn, we've all accepted the contract. As is, uh, I don't want to go half, but on page three, A, page, look at that. So the office agrees to provide full equipment, training, etc. Full equipment, periods, provide services upon request of the town administration. This is the case, then why are we not adding more violations costs by the sheriffs? We pay out $450 every month, for what? What do we get out of it?
Four hours of service to find.
And no violation. You can stand at the store and in 10 minutes, we'll be watching 10 cars go by the stop sign. That, great, why can't the sheriff do that? I agree, I, I, I sometimes I'm around the store, I, people come down, they're not going $25 an hour. And it's just somebody happens. And when the sheriff does get taken gently to one.
We also, Kathy and Joe, we've been about this and our recommendation as the London community was to go ahead and sign it. If the amount has gone up, the contract has to change to actually get the sheriff in here and keep the bus sooner rather than later. So outline what it is we expect for our, I mean, here from, from that, what they intend to offer.
I tend to agree with John about the level of service. I think that we are receiving from the sheriff. I did just a quick calculation and came up with an average of six hours a month, that could be wrong. But it's normally eight hours a month, but it turns out I think we're contracting. Also, it seems to be that during the course of the time of the invoices that I study, there were five foreign agents, which five were, and I couldn't tell by looking at the invoice, but the nature of this file is what actually happened. Because it doesn't look like they allow the case numbers and brief description on the invoice. So I, I think Sue's got a great idea in terms of going ahead and signing this contract. But I think it would be good to have a signed contract company with a list of our customers. So that the chair of has a notice that we are not fully in agreement with the service we're dealing with. Why do we?
Well, there is another possibility that we don't sign it and we invite the sheriff with us to communicate with the sheriff or Matthew, who's going to the next one. Try to prove that they're not in agreement.
Okay.
Can I just, can I just say, just so you know, we did generate $1,832 from any similar funds that were given out. But we also, yeah, but we expended $49 hundred.
Well, I, I remember going out and meeting with one of the sheriffs a couple of months back. They did patrol like Little Town Road and whatever, for what reason should they be doing that? I mean, on a regular basis, so that's part of the hours that Sue's can't figure out. But they should be, they should be here doing speeding, stops, violations of that nature. Not going up the Howard, the thing that the roads are terrible, that is the fear.
Most of your violations are right here in town. Yes, the Little Town Road, Little Town Center, I don't know. A lot going on there.
They were really, they explained it once they needed cell service and follow up on everything, they get it going forward.
The hotels are right here in town.
I, I'm not sure whether we get back some, whatever.
$1,800.
$1,849, right?
Yep, $1,832, we got back.
Well, if the board agrees, we can just communicate and that we're unhappy, invite the sheriff to the next one or we need to have this discussion. And they're not going to cancel the contract. And they don't, they don't do much anyway, so at least they didn't prove it, this was the figure. Alan?
New member inviting the sheriff in before, and one of the complaints was speeding. And he said, they have been told not to arrest him by less than 10 miles an hour ocean speed. And the reason is, it's a waste of time because it goes to court and the lawyers rank you about hours and a lot of your machine might be off. And he says, they can't make it stay.
Well, I'm just thinking, you're indicating that the sheriff's contract itself has set the rule 10 miles of ocean speed limit?
They, no, they were told.
Yeah, who told them that to slow it?
No, no. The legal people or the law enforcement, the community has decided not to go less than 10 because they're going to get thrown out of court anyway.
I just want to make that clear, Alan, then.
No, it wasn't the select, no, it wasn't us, it wasn't the select.
Joe, the way I meant this was, was not worded. That was full equipment training. I have suspicion that we are getting sheriffs that have not turned it off since they completed the.
I have no idea.
That was a vision of bad.
Well, these are all good questions, so everybody agrees, why don't we just not sign this tonight? And invite the sheriff to come to this meeting?
This contract begins on July 1st.
Okay, so it's still good?
June 30th, no, no, this is July 1st, yeah.
It's still alive, because they don't do much anymore, so. But I did have to communicate to them that we.
Right, I feel Mike want to get on, you know, get right to them unless I know that.
Right.
We're still considering.
Yes. Uh, we don't believe in the motion to that, so if anybody is, if someone's had a record or missed it, that would need. I can talk to you when you are. Solid waste pool. You need to appoint, is it two?
Yeah.
Should be, should be sure that they.
And I was the alternate.
Right, I'm the office.
Yeah, and Cynthia said she wouldn't do it again now that they're back to in-person meetings. And I'll be the alternate, but.
Would you, you're planning to be that one, right?
Yeah, doing, Cynthia likes to go to the meetings.
If, if there's no objection, let's one of you, gee, I'm bored, I can sort of, show you how I work at the time. Going to make a motion to approve Cynthia as the member, and is it open?
Tom, second.
Any further discussion? Is there anybody who would like to, like to, to serve this committee, I don't want to smell it. Anyway, all the way, say aye?
Aye.
Both? All right, the next item is community courts. Cemetery, um, Ryan and I have not met and plan to go over the cemeteries. He did lose an employee, um, and we have, um. This is fun. Yeah, sure. Well, this was, uh, this was, uh, and Walter and me decided, decided to work here. And he has, um, he's now very younger, he's 17-year-old, he's got the.
Yeah, it's downstairs, it's, um, John, John Howard's son.
Yeah, Howard's son.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
And I had communicated to Walter that I needed to talk to him and make sure that the insurance is, is paid, the insurance and me. I also told Walter that he made sure that the employee has sufficient eye protection, that he had the proper shoes. And Walter assured me that that is all done and he sort of received you, you know, the application.
I got the W9s and all of that information and I believe Bill had a conversation with Wade and Sure. We happened to stop in to talk about the, the park there, the Wilson Park. And I believe Bill had a conversation about it and think we're okay. But that's something you want to check with.
And that's all, you know, Bill's not here, so, but he was going to be checked out and make sure that he, we'll pay what I have to do. Wong said he is a good worker, I guess he's always going to work. I guess he's cool there. And we do have a offer. And, yeah, a lot of those questions are off, you know, more than I know.
I understand the Fisher family, which is the Fisher family in the house, to Bill, have offered 5 acres of land in a cemetery on a toll bill. I don't know exactly where that is, but it was exposed, it feels so small. So John, you're going to go up and take a look at that, as you know, to see what we've got and try to hear what's happening.
I think it's up past Donovan Clark's. Where there's sort of 5 acres up there that was in the Vern Fisher family. And she Fisher, so David Rogers and that family is saying that there's 5 acres there. More willing to be.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's the one where his George John, so I think we just have to make contact, take a look at it and see if it's something. It's wooden.
Right, we'll talk with David, but I think it's actually on the tax map too, it's a parcel all of its own.
Okay, so maybe, maybe what day you showing them?
Thursday, yeah, when they all.
John, is this a gift? Is this a gift?
I don't know that much about it, I didn't, in fact, I did go take a look at it the other day. I think it's mostly set to all the students.
I think it, I think it, Kathy, I'm not sure, but I think it was indicated that it could be picked. I wait for you.
Joe, Joe, Bill, we need to talk about the cemetery policy, the.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we mentioned that in the small, sorry. You want to, you want to, you want to, I don't, I don't have it here, it only blew a slight change in this.
Right. Um, the only thing that I'm aware that Bill was changing on it was at one point, we had that we were going to collect, um, 100, $300 from non-residents and 150 from residents. And we at one time said 75 was going to go into the lots of sales. And the other 75 was going to go into perpetual care. But we have since found out, talking with BLCT and other attorneys, that when something goes into perpetual care, that's where it goes, it stays and you don't touch it.
Right.
It goes into perpetual care and you don't touch it. It is, it's almost like an endowment. So it didn't make sense for us then to have a policy where half of our money is going to go into something we're not going to be able to touch. Um, so his amendment was to everything just go into lots and sales. And that we're there, we can work with the lots and sales money if you need to. One of the things that I had brought up, because I am on the trustee of public funds, which does oversee cemetery lots and graves, maintenance and sales. Um, how does the board want to move forward if they were to use the sales funds? Do you, should we have a conversation with the rest of the trustees as to whether you're going to make the request to the trustees and then the trustees release the funds? Because they're a totally separate accounts, they're considered trustee accounts.
Yeah, I, Kim, I think that's, that's, that's something we will put on the agenda for another meeting.
Yep.
But for Dylan and Steve, um, information, this cemetery policy was out of last year.
Um, almost two years ago.
Yeah, it goes far. So we wrote that and because of what we learned about the funds, it's just a simple amendment, so that you know, it doesn't go on the perpetual care, this is perpetual care. So, yeah, if somebody might make a motion to accept changes, to change the policy, unless you have any concerns. Okay, there, okay. Go ahead.
Kim, you say cemetery fund, that's the sales of the lot, it goes into that fund?
Nope, the sales, I collect the sales from whoever orders a lot. And it goes into the trustee of public funds account.
Yeah, Kathy, the only change is that instead of letting you in perpetual care, which you can never touch, who just takes it goes in. Because it's kind of a daycare center fee, so you don't really need care.
No, but at one time, the perpetual care made enough interest to pay for the maintenance of the cemeteries. And then when interest rates changed, there was not enough interest that was generated, so it then relied on recreating the general fund for the cemetery.
Who wants to move?
I'm going to use that this change to reference cemetery policy.
Second.
I'll send it.
Any discussion, any further discussion, anybody in the room, have any discussions on it? If not, all the favor of the policy change, say aye?
Aye.
Both?
Need all signatures on this also.
All right, the Parks Committee, so wait, I don't know. Parks Committee, the only thing I will say is the sign has been made. And it's, I don't know what to say about this, but it is made and is ready to go up at the. When I have the committee's side, we don't put it up.
So the white sign, gold letters, just made, sent my shop. Mike, Bill and I have constructed the frame out of six-by-six pressure treatment bummer that the Gaffin's London Association paid for. And it's ready to be installed. We just need to find a common kind that Danny can be there for the excavator, do the digging, help us set it. Mike and I cleared the site where, you know, we met with Danny and got an approved location, that's all clear, it's all ready. So fortunately Danny had a day when he could have done it. And I was camping in the, in the Adirondacks and Mike was working at this, so it didn't work out, so, uh, tried it.
I'm going to go to the back, that, and most everyone knows that the sign is actually a hint from Jopoleo. It's beautiful and that just our welcome to Gaffin signs, so it's going to be a really beautiful addition to the parks that you showed.
All right. Anything else on the, excuse me? Um, first up, the meeting?
I don't have any.
Okay, uh, Bill, I know we talked a little bit about heat pump, but is it really, can we have anything further?
I think we're waiting on a bit. Just in case we get any, um, just trying to come and get that some of the, or just trying to, I mean, have some, pass some.
Do we have any other comment?
I did not attend the emergency meeting that Slack board had, but did look at the job. And I did receive copies a minute from that meeting that was called special meeting. As a public, I found it rather offensive that the email that went out to 40 people accusing Suzanne inappropriate behavior. And in rather parallel, the email that went out to the Slack board accusing me of things I did while I was on the Slack board. And that was not, uh, was not true either. And asking somebody to make an apology, if you're going to be long, then how about you do it to the Slack board? And you don't feel it to 40 people in the community, that's good.
Thank you, Alan, any other comment? If not, the next regular, so what do you need, like, on here? It's 6:00 PM here. Joe?
That's the time, it's the 19th.
It says, well, I have 20th here, so.
Well, that's because it's 14 days from July 6th, it's Tuesday.
Okay, so it's the 19th. Okay, definitely. All right, so the meeting here is a Monday, the 19th, uh, at 6:00 PM. Okay, motion for adjournment, please? You want to say?
Please, John?
Second? Second, you said? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Both? Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.